Tonight, we have one change to our agenda. Kathleen McQuade, who, as you recall, was postponed from Monday, won't be able to make it tonight either. So that's the only change I have for tonight. Does anybody else have any changes to the agenda? All right. We need to approve the minutes from last meeting, from our Monday meeting. Is there a motion to, or are there any changes to the minutes? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Second. All in favor? opposed. All right. See, we're so efficient. All right. We'll move on to candidate interviews. I see that our first candidate is here, so I'll explain the interview procedure. You'll have, as you know, three minutes to start for your opening statement. When you have 30 seconds remaining, you'll see a yellow light in front of you. When your time is up, you'll see a red light and you'll hear a tone sound. We ask that you conclude when that red light comes on. Then the commissioners will each have, I know there's a lot of feedback and what's going on. Then the commissioners will have each three minutes to ask you questions and have those questions answered again. You'll see the yellow light when you have 30 seconds and a red light when your time is up. And again, we ask for you to quickly conclude when that red light shows. In order for you to have, if you feel like something goes left unsaid at the end, if you get cut off by the light or something, you can submit in writing any additional comments that you have to the same place where you submitted your application, and we will all be given those and they'll be posted on the website as a supplement to your application. So you may begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. I'm James Schneider, and I'm fairly new to the county. Just moved here in 2017. I have a bachelor's of mechanical engineering degree from Penn State University. And in 1984, I moved to Montgomery County to take a job with the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. And I was there for 12 years. And at that point, I decided to go into business, into the real estate business, which I've enjoyed and it's been very rewarding. And in 2017, I decided to move because where I was living, Gaithersburg, the schools were deteriorating. I was in a bad zone, and we would have had to move somewhere. So I found Anarondle County, and I've always liked it here, and I thought this is a great time to move. Because I now have a first and second grader.
Mr. Schneider, can you turn on your microphone? Or is it already on?
It's on.
It is on?
I think it's on. Can be closer. Does it help? Yes. Okay. Thanks. Okay. Is that, is better?
If you have a cellphone that's close to your microphone, you need to turn that off. Because it's, there's one that's bleeding. Here we go.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay. No problem. So anyways, I was looking around. Our home search took quite a while. I had to send my daughter to kindergarten in a Catholic school, but we decided to move here. So now I've got a two-year-old, a six, and a seven-year-old. And I would like to participate in their education in whatever way I can, volunteering and even joining the Board of Education to help. I think I know what they've done wrong in Montgomery County. They still have some excellent schools, as they always remind you. But we were not going to be in that. And I think the primary reason, and they admit this, I talked to councilmen there, it's growth. They want to grow, because it's good for the economy, but it also puts a great burden on the schools. And they're spending more money, and they know that it's not going to actually help. They, I can tell. So I know we don't have direct input into the growth policy, but at least we can remind our leaders, we can constantly remind them that this puts a burden on the school system. And I think that's very important. And so I'm here to apply, and I hope some of you agree and understand where I'm coming from. We can start with the questions, if you'd like.
Good afternoon, Mr. Schneider. My name is Natalie, and I represent Casa de Maryland on this commission. I would like to know if you can elaborate a little more about, or regarding, to how the Montgomery County schools were deteriorating, or what was happening that affected your decision to move your children to this county?
Well, the ratings were down, and I believe it has to do with, they call it smart growth, but they put a lot of apartments all near where I live. And I, you can do the research on this, I think that had a negative impact on the education system. From Silver Spring all the way to Germantown, Gaithersburg, they'll tell you, there's a great divide between east-west, and it's where the development is, where there's out-of-control development has a, it burdens the school systems.
And I guess my follow-up question would be, if in this county, we were to encounter a similar problem, where the community, or certain pockets of the community, were to suddenly start growing exponentially, what would be some of your ideas to combat that, or to keep the quality of education that we currently have?
Well, in some areas, they actually restrict growth. They just say, no, you can't build more than so many units per acre, or you can't subdivide it all. And I know that there's some policies in certain places, it might be a wise thing to do, because if we did that now, before things get out of hand, Anarondle County could be a great jewel of Maryland, which would be underdeveloped, but yet close to DC, close to Baltimore. It's an ideal location. So if you build a lot of housing here and crowd people out, traffic will get worse, the schools will get worse, and it's not going to be a good idea. I mean, it's, yeah, it's jobs, but that's only temporary. It's not sustainable. Growth is not sustainable.
Thank you.
Good evening. How are you today?
Hi, good.
Thanks for coming out. My name is Vanessa Rivera, and I'm with Anaronda County Council PTAs. My question for you is, you stated that your kids go to Central Elementary School, and your school changed from a PTA to a PTO. Can you give me a little bit, can you elaborate on that? What are your thoughts in terms of you stating that it gave you a little more control locally, and you like that idea?
Yeah, I think that's why they did it. They wanted more control. They didn't want their money going to the national organization. Just keep it local. Makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Okay. So one of the things for us PTAs is advocacy is a big key to that. You know, as a board member, that is also going to be expected of you. Would you be comfortable advocating on behalf of the board, and with community leaders, political leaders, and businesses? And how would you go about doing so?
Well, I feel comfortable talking with all types of people, as I do in my business. I meet a lot of people, and I feel comfortable, yeah.
Good evening, sir. My name is Chris Barber. I represent the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. Thank you for coming out tonight. In your application, you mentioned that you want to keep political indoctrination out of our schools. Could you elaborate on that?
Yes, I noticed that in Montgomery County a bit, yes. They were encouraging, I guess, kids to do social work, kind of the volunteering, which I don't know, I think you have to be careful. When you volunteer, it's really hard to do it in such a way as not to have a condescending attitude towards the people who receive the benefits. And I just can't imagine these kids, it, I just can't see it. I had bad feelings about that. And I remember shortly after the election, all these kids showed up at the courthouse. I was at the courthouse for some reason or another, and all these kids, it was a day or two after the election, and they went there. Apparently, they were supposed to be in school, and I don't know if they got in trouble or not, you know, because when I was a kid, if you skipped school, that was a big deal. I have a feeling they might have been tipped off and saying, well, go ahead and protest, you know, go ahead and make a little noise, we're not going to say anything. I don't know, I didn't investigate it further, but it was strange that there were hundreds of kids at the courthouse instead of at the school. And I think the teachers, and the teachers' union, they, I guess they want to almost educate them, push them towards the Democratic Party. That's just a feeling. We have to keep an eye on that. I don't know to what extent that goes on here, if teachers have some, if they share their opinion politically with the students at, in higher levels, obviously, in elementary school, I don't think I have to worry about it too much, but we have to keep an eye on that sort of thing.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Lisa Shore, and I also represent the Anaronda County Council of PTAs. And the Anaronda County Council of PTAs is a, is the countywide group that oversees the PTAs in the county, all the PTAs. And I want to get a little more elaboration on the question that was just asked about volunteering, you know, in schools and kids doing their service out in their community. And I'd like to try to understand whether it's possible to do service in the community that doesn't have a political leaning to it, perhaps for the environment, or maybe the kids that you saw in the court were watching the way a courtroom, what happens in a courtroom. And I just, I just want you to elaborate maybe a little bit on that, to see if you feel that the service component in the schools is something that should be eliminated completely, or if you're just talking about the politics piece of it.
The politics piece of it. I think doing something for the environment is good, like going out and cleaning up a park or something, that will teach the kids that the environment is something we should take care of, and it'll teach them later on not to litter, because they'll be cleaning it up. They were cleaning it up, and that's a good idea. And, oh, by the way, those kids were, it was protesting the election. They weren't in court, they were around the courthouse in Rockville there. It was, it was interesting.
And I guess I have a second and sort of a follow-up question. Board of Education members often get approached with a, an issue or concern that somebody has. Can you tell me a little bit about how you would go ahead, go about researching an issue that somebody brings forward, forming an opinion on that, and defending your views on that?
Well, I would ask all the questions of this person, and I would see whatever research I could do on them, I don't know. But I would talk to them and find, and talk to the people that they refer to as well, if the complaint is, and whatever, I would talk to both parties, and I would listen to them, and I think I can tell what, what people are thinking. I think I can, you know, judge people well.
Mr. Schneider, good evening. I'm Jerry Klaasmaier from Anaronda Community College. One of the databases, it's research for all applicants for this position, is the Maryland Judiciary Case Search Results. And as I mentioned to you when you came in earlier, your report lists over 75 entries. Do you want to take this as an opportunity to explain why you think that may be?
Well, I know why it is. Most of those entries, I'm the plaintiff. And I, my business involves lending money in real estate. I'm a landlord, and some of these are evictions. And I also lend money, and I am involved in the tax sale. And that involves several lawsuits per year, I think, mostly in Prince George's County. Got two active cases closing out right now in Anarondle. And, well, that's what I do. So if you check out, there are probably, not in many cases where I'm the defendant, but if you check it out, you'll have to look at the address to see if it's me, or if someone else has the same name, but, you know, mostly it's plaintiff.
Okay. And you mentioned the possibility of a similar name that somebody has in another jurisdiction?
Yeah, there's someone else out there that...
Has your name?
Yeah. But you just check the address. If the address is 406 Long Draft Road, that's where I used to live. If the address is on Monarch Drive, that's where I live now, so.
Okay. One other question I have, in your comments, you indicate that you think that we need to work with Anaronda County leaders to prevent policies that sound good to some people, but will hurt our schools. Do you have any specific in mind when you mention that?
Well, I guess my experience in Montgomery County, they, it's about growth. They promise that the schools will improve if you, if we grow, if we just add more tax base, but it doesn't quite work that way, because, so they were promoting, ah, some other idea where they would give poor-performing schools more money, but they don't say how that money's going to be used, they just say, here's more money. And, you know, I think we should watch, if there's going to be more money, we should know exactly what's being spent on.
Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to our interview. I represent the Association of Educational Leaders, and that's the administration of Anarondle County. What do you see as your role as a board member?
To help guide educational policies, to keep an eye on things, you know, to, I guess, interact with other board members, to research issues, to hopefully guide us in the right direction, to keep the education system high-quality.
What do you do to build a climate of consensus on the board?
Well, I would talk to any disagreeing members and try to explain how I feel, and try to listen to what they're saying as well. And I think if everyone is reasonable and looks at data, there should be consensus. I think everyone should agree, if they honestly look at the data and see the issues and really are open-minded, you know, there should end up being consensus.
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
You mean, like hours per week, or?
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
The time needed? Well, I would say, I'd have to look at the workload and see what's all presented, but I think it's, could be done in, I guess, I'm not sure exactly, but I'll say 10 hours a week.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome, and thanks for coming out tonight. I'm Jackie Alsop, and I represent the Anaronda County branch of the NAACP. And my question is, the 2018-2023 strategic plans charts the courts for the school system, and the goal of the strategic plan is to ensure that every student meets or exceeds standards as the achievement gaps are eliminated. But you receive a report to the board that there has been some disparate treatment between African-American students and other students in the area of suspension and expulsions. What action would you take as a board member?
Well, I guess we'd have to look at the reason for these. It takes detailed research, because if you just look at the data, you'll say, oh, there are more African-Americans that are being suspended, so that's obvious racism. But if you look at the details, you have to study each case in great detail and see what exactly happened in each case. And if there's some teacher that is unfairly picking on one group or another, then we have to talk to them.
Also, in that strategic plan, the Anaronda County Public Schools Strategic Plan, they state that all students and staff should have access to safe, equitable, and engaging environment to learn and work. If parents come to a board meeting, and those parents state that their children do not feel safe at their school as a result of several incidents occurring at their school, what would you do as a board member? How would you respond to this to the parents?
Well, in some schools, a police presence might be necessary, or guards, perhaps. I know there are some schools where, you know, we've had some incidents in Montgomery County, and, yeah, I guess we have some real challenges here, and I'm not sure if that involves guards or police presence, or whatever, but if the parents, you know, if there's repeat incidents, we should move quickly to remove troublemakers, and we might want to consider guards.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming out tonight. My name is Corinne Frank. I'm one of the appointees of the county executive. I have a couple of questions. Your interview was a little pithy, so I kind of want to dig in a little bit more. You, a lot of people hit on some of the things I wanted to ask already, but you said that you wanted to prevent wasteful spending. Could you give me one or two instances where you think that we're not appropriately allocating our resources?
No, I haven't really studied the budget, but I just know my experience in Montgomery County. When I talked to the president of the council, he had just spoken to a group of realtors and said, we're spending $92 million extra dollars for the schools. And a lot of people said, wow, that's great, and, but I would instead say, what's it being spent on? And I told the guy, when he was done speaking, I talked to him in private, and said, you know, that $92 million probably won't have an effect. And he said, yeah, but what are we going to do? Walk away? So these people are spending more money, just, I guess, to get people to vote for them. And what is it actually being spent on? I want to know.
Okay. And recently, Anaronda County Public Schools has gone from an appointed board to an elected board. Which model do you think is most effective?
Well, I think they're both trouble. Because appointing, that's political appointees, but if you elect people, how many people actually know what they're voting for? You know, you see all these signs out there, and I don't know anything about these people. I'd have to do detailed research. And how many people do the research to determine these minor positions, like the clerk of court and all, you know?
I do.
So I don't know. Well, that's good, you know? Maybe voting should be restricted to people who've done the research and actually read up on these things, but I suspect a lot of voters just vote for the person who has the most signs out there, and I don't know if that's a great idea or not, but let's see how it goes.
How would you suggest we put a litmus test on someone's ability to research a candidate?
Well, it's not easy.
Okay.
You just have to, I think it's worth trying. I like change, I like trying new things, and let's see how the election works, and, well, let's see what happens.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Hello. Thanks for coming out. My name's Anthony, and I am the president of Crask, the student union of the county. It seems to me like you're very invested in students' matters and how students are feeling around the state, so I thank you for that. But as you move into Anaronda County, I wanted to know if you knew of any ways, resources, or methods in order to maybe gauge student opinion or interact with students regarding issues?
Well, I think that's important, to see how the students themselves are doing. I remember when I was in high school, they didn't seem to care, or no one asked us, so I just went through, and it was all okay, I suppose, but it would have been nice to have someone listen to my opinion, I guess, and I think, you know, it might be good to interview graduating seniors about their experience, perhaps, would be good.
Okay. And my follow-up question is, should you have a position on this board, and you were to encounter a group of students, or even a majority of students, who were to maybe agree with what the students in Montgomery County were doing, and maybe want to do it themselves regarding things that might be rather political? How would you react to that here in Anaronda County?
Well, I guess they have the right to do it, and I, I think perhaps they should be encouraged to listen to both sides, because I don't know, it seems like they don't like to, like, people don't like to listen. They like to talk, they like to make a lot of noise, but listening, that's the thing. And if we could teach these politically active kids, and I think it's great to be active, I think it's wonderful, but with more experience, you understand the issues in greater depth, and it's, I think, critically important to listen to both sides. So if you're out there protesting against the election results, maybe you should hear from someone else, you know?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Samantha Carter, and I'm with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. I was just curious what your experience or knowledge was about the special education issues that are occurring within Anarondle County?
Well, I'm a little weak in that area. I guess I don't know anything at all about special education in Anarondle County. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. So what would you do to catch yourself up to speed with what's going on with about 8,000 of our students here in our county?
Well, I suppose I could start by talking to you. If I'm selected, I would talk to you, and maybe you could give me something to read, and that's what I would do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
No, sure.
Good evening. I'm the last to go. I'm the other appointee of the county executive. My name is Susannah Kipke. I'm curious to know, I want to follow up on what Dr. Farrar was asking you, which is, do you, are you aware of the time commitment that being on the board is beyond just the meetings that are scheduled, and do you have the time to commit to it?
Well, I'm not exactly aware of the time commitment, no. I don't know. I assume that I would just be able to read up on the issues and show up at meetings, and it would be nice to know what the time commitment is, what other people, you know, what other board members spend on...
It's significant, would you say? It's about 20 hours on average? Yeah, sometimes more, probably, than, because there's additional activities and additional commitments beyond just, just the meetings. So my question is, do you, do you have the time to commit to those extras?
20 hours per week?
I think that's, that's about what we've all estimated, yeah.
Mostly in the daytime, or in the evenings?
I think it's both. It's a mix of both.
I'll do it.
Okay. Well, I'm the last to go, and that's my question, so thank you very, very much for coming out, and have a good evening.
Oh, thanks.
Mm-hmm. I can leave this on, because I think our next person is here, and next we have Jeffrey Mockris. He is right there, so.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good. How about you?
I'm doing well. You were sitting right there when I went over the procedure before, right?
Yes.
Did you want me to repeat it?
No.
Okay, then, you can start whenever you're ready.
Great. Hi, good evening. I'm Jeff McCreez from Annapolis. I'm the proud parent of five Anaronda County public school students. And I'd like to start with a short story on how I first got started in education advocacy. I'm a product of public education in Maryland myself, 10 years in PG County, three years in Montgomery County. After college, I moved away from Maryland to become a Navy pilot. I served around the world, in Italy, in Iceland, in Japan, California, three years in the Persian Gulf. So when an opportunity arose to come back to Maryland to teach Middle Eastern history, the history of Islam, and ethics at the Naval Academy, I jumped. I wanted to bring my beautiful California bride back east and teach my kids to crab in the Chesapeake Bay, just like my parents did for me. We wanted to live in downtown Annapolis, and on the first day of house hunting, our realtor told us that the middle schools and the high schools there were, in her words, undoable. And in the hotel room that night, I promised to my wife, Jen, that we'd get involved, and that we'd do everything we could to help our county school system. So we started quickly to build bridges with other interested parents, with politicians, with administrators. I joined the Board of Education Citizens Advisory Committee, and then the new Annapolis Education Commission, which I chaired for several years. I served as the only parent member of the original countywide MGT study in 2006 that prioritized school construction. And in the middle of the Great Recession, we successfully lobbied to start two new world-class middle school magnet programs throughout the county. IB schools... Of 1.7 million public school parents in our state, in 2010, the Maryland State Department of Education chose me as their statewide Parent Involvement Matters Award winner. And since then, I've been involved in education advocacy, not just at the local level, but also at the state and the federal levels as well. And I'm very proud that for the past five years, I've co-chaired along with the state school superintendent or her deputy, Maryland State's Family Engagement Council. Last year, I took off the Navy's uniform for the last time and I left my job as a permanent professor at the Naval Academy. And I'm now a senior analyst at Johns Hopkins University's Applied Physics Lab. I use modern analytics in this job to improve large government organizations. And that same skill set, I think, would be a great complement to working with a large school system. So I'll leave it here. My passion for public education is deep and it's sincere, and it would be a great honor to put that same passion to work for our local school board.
Thank you for coming today, Mr. McRus. My name is Natalie. I represent the organization Casa de Maryland on this commission. Casa de Maryland is a nonprofit organization mostly dedicated to the immigrant community. I noticed on your application that you identified one of the major issues to be the possible inequality or the possible opportunity to receive equal quality education amongst different socioeconomic backgrounds in our community. My question with this comes into play with the immigrant community. Many times, our immigrant community lacks the quality of education due to the fact that the parents cannot always participate in school activities due to lack of bilingual facilitators or due to lack of knowing how to culturally approach these immigrant communities. So my question here would be is, as a board member, how would you fix these issues or how would you be sure to include immigrant communities in participation in school or get them to feel like they can participate and come in?
Thanks, Natalie, and thanks very much for your advocacy for the new American community. Let me first start by saying that my dad is a first-generation American. He was born in 1939. He grew up in Greece, German-occupied Greece. His first memories are of soldiers marching through Athens. It was a time of warfare. It was a time of bloodshed. It was a time of hunger. It was a time of poverty. I'm very aware of what that's like. If you were me or my brother growing up as a kid, you never left any food on your plate. As my dad said, "You don't know what it's like to be hungry. And if you did, you'd never do that again." So I'm very aware of what our new generation of Americans are going through. When we first started advocating for our public schools, we did a deep data search. And we were really trying to find out whether our middle schools and high schools really were as bad in Annapolis as people said they were or whether it was a reputation. And what we found was that, yes, they were bad. Student test scores were the worst in the county in math and in English. But not only that, what we found were in these schools where our most vulnerable students are, children of poverty, children of immigrants, children of color, children whose parents didn't have an education that maybe the rest of the county did. In those same schools were not the best teachers in our county, but rather the least educated. We found there was a direct correlation between poverty levels and the lack of full teacher certification, of teachers with master's degrees. These schools had the same, had the highest teacher turnover rate. And we're setting ourselves up for failure when it comes time to helping our most vulnerable students. So that's what I found in terms of reaching out to the immigrant community. Just down the road, two miles from here, is Tyler Heights Elementary. Over 90% poverty, over 80% immigrant community. And yet, they're able to fill their schools with parents, with immigrant parents, by making them feel welcome, by having international nights. And, you know, when you bring, when you create a warm and welcoming environment at the school level, when you offer food at evening events, you can get parents...
Mr. McRus, I'm afraid I have to ask you to conclude.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. McRus. Thank you for your service. One of the things that stood out to me was, again, the equal access part. So it is an issue facing all the schools. What responsibilities should the board assume for dealing with the societal problems facing some of the populations, as you stated, in this area, in our schools, that they're dealing with poverty, hunger, emotional illness and drug abuse?
Well, I think to build on the previous conversation, the school system has rightfully spent enormous amounts of money and time, attention and talent toward trying to narrow achievement gaps. And we're making progress, but we're at the point that economists would probably call the point of diminishing returns, where we're moving forward but at a slower and slower rate. And I've been pretty closely watching school issues for about 15 years. And in the conversation over these 15 years, I really have never heard the issue of teacher experience level in our schools of poverty. And it amazes me why we don't. Why isn't that a metric that our administration is looking at closely? Why is it that still today, there's a great disparity between teacher experience level in our schools of poverty and our schools that do not have high levels of poverty? So that's an area that I would be particularly interested in shedding some light in.
Okay. And if I have a couple more minutes, you also talked about the special needs of current military presence in our country. I was a veteran and my husband's also active-duty military. So can you elaborate a little bit on what you talk about when you talk about the special needs?
Sure. When I was chair of the Annapolis Education Committee, we had a very sad case come up. We had a young Navy officer who was a hard charger. He was doing extremely well. He gained a promotion to become one of the superintendent of the Naval Academy senior staff. And in conjunction with the promotion, he was accorded a change of houses from one of the small bungalows to one of the bigger houses across the yard. This family had moved several times in the past years and they made a request to the school board to keep their elementary school children in the same school rather than moving them to a different school because they simply moved a quarter mile away still on the Naval Academy. They had enormous problems in getting that simple request followed. In fact, they came before one of these boards here and it was almost like a board of inquiry, where one of the lawyers from the school system here approached the young military family like they were a criminal. You know, "What are you trying to do? Why are you trying to skirt the rules?" And I think a board that's more aware of some of the challenges of military families wouldn't have let that happen.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir. Thank you for your service. My name's Chris Barber. I represent the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. In your application, you mentioned that you want to improve school security. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So we've got five kids. Actually, two have graduated and are onward now. But I will tell you that the biggest nightmare for my wife and I would be some type of a shooting scenario that takes place alarmingly with increasing regularity now. In fact, our 12-year-old child now, on occasion, since the shooting down in Southern Maryland last year, has had to sleep on our bedroom floor because he's scared of it. I think there are several dimensions to what we can do. One, there's a capital implication, right? That new schools, as they're constructed and when they're renovated, have a new security system where to enter a school, you need to enter first a gated door, you present your credentials, then you go through another gated door so you can prevent someone from coming in. And I think we're in the process rightfully of retrofitting that in most of our schools. I think also there's another component of mental health and mental education that will fall upon our guidance counselors and counselors in general. And then thirdly, I think there's an information piece. There's a social media piece that, you know, as we look through in retrospect some of these very unfortunate cases around the country, in most of them, we see signs on social media of improper behavior, warning signs that are only picked up in retrospect. I think we can probably be doing a better job of policing social media and looking for those warning signs so what happened down in Southern Maryland doesn't happen in Anarondale County.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi.
Lisa Shore, representing the Anarondale County Council of PTAs. And first of all, I want to thank you for your service to our country and to our community. My question is about outreach and community engagement. And I was curious, in your experience, both on the county level and state level, how you feel about our current board's outreach? And do you have any ideas of things that they could do better or new ideas that you want to bring to the table in reference to outreach or community engagement?
Sure. Well, one of the challenges that we found in the Annapolis Education Commission is that if you hold your meetings in a formal government building, the communities who you most want to reach don't come. If you're at City Hall and you want to encourage the immigrant population to arrive, they're not going to come. You need to go to them. If you're really serious about reaching out to targeted populations that are having problems with student performance, you need to find a way to get into their shoes, to get into their neighborhoods. And so we started holding our meetings instead of at City Hall or the city of Annapolis office buildings. We started holding them in the Public Housing Projects meeting rooms, in the Boys and Girls Club, in the local elementary schools where we know they already have a relationship. And it does surprise me sometimes that the school board doesn't do that, that we have a beautiful, well, beautiful in 1970s, I guess, architecture. We had a beautiful room here, but when was the last time you saw it filled to the brim with non-English speakers? Why? Because, you know, this population does not trust many government institutions sometimes. And so, you know, my idea of outreach is to hold greater numbers of town meetings in places where our most at-risk students feel comfortable and to get out into the community at every opportunity to engage with them and meet. Thanks, Lisa.
Mr. McRus, I'm Jerry Klasmar from the Anarondale Community College. I'd like to give you some time to elaborate on the first response you gave when you were talking about the studies that suggested the poor students often go to schools that are in below-average physical condition and teachers have less experience and so forth. And you indicate you'd like a chance to deal with that. I wonder what your thoughts are?
Sure. I'm happy to forward you at a later time a presentation that I made to the county school board a couple of years ago, when a few of our county's blue-ribbon schools, a few of our county schools won the coveted blue-ribbon designation. And I wanted to come to compliment them and their leadership, but I also wanted to point out the fact that just across town, five miles away from some of these blue-ribbon schools, were schools that had, that didn't have the same success rate. And part of the reason why, in my opinion, that they didn't have that success rate was because of the teacher experience level. So we took a look at the experience level in the school with the blue ribbon and we took a look at the experience level in, I think it was Tyler Heights, and they were diametrically opposed. And to me, the message is, if we're serious about correcting imbalances in student performance, we have to encourage our best and brightest teachers to go to the schools where student performance is lagging. And in most cases, those lagging schools are schools of poverty and schools of high immigrant populations.
Thank you.
I thank you for stepping up and wanting to be in this role, but I also want to thank you for your service. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders, which is the principals in administration. What do you see as your role as a board member?
So I think a board member really has two key roles. The first role is to provide strategic guidance for the superintendent and for the administration to provide oversight, to look at the superintendent's strategic plan and draft strategic plan and provide guidance to it, and corrective guidance where the school system is falling short or there are changes in the greater environment that need adjustments. So the first part, I think, is one of strategic guidance to the administration led by the superintendent. The second part is being a voice for the public. Since I've been watching the schools, our county has invested between 49 and 51% of all of our tax revenues, the public purse, has gone to the public school system. It's by far the largest line item in the county budget. And our population has a right to express their opinions on it and they have a right to influence the shaping of our budget and the way that we run our school system. And I think being the ear and the voice for our citizens is a second, equally important role for a board member.
What do you do to build a climate of consensus on the board?
At my new job at Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab, we form small groups, we analyze tough, thorny technical issues, and we break up and we form new groups all the time. And our leadership has made it a key point to provide for us the academic literature that shows that diversity in decision-making leads to better decisions. And diversity in skin color and ethnicity is, you know, a part of it, but also diversity of viewpoints is critical, diversity of backgrounds. And so for a team to work well, one has to extract from all the different diverse members of that group their own different opinions on how to tackle a problem, resolve them, reconcile them, and come up with a common answer that answers the problem.
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
As much as it takes.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. McRus. My name is Jacqueline Alsop and I represent the Anarondale County branch of the NAACP. And I wanted to follow up on one of your goals that you stated in your application, to improve school security, to ensure that all students are safe. The Anarondale County Public School System has developed a strategic plan for 2018 to And in that plan, it states that it is committed to providing all Anarondale County public school students and staff with access to safe, equitable and engaging environment to learn and work. If parents come to a board meeting and state that their children do not feel safe as a result of several incidents that have occurred at their children's school, what action would you take as a board member?
There's nothing more important than the safety of our children in the public schools. And if an issue came to my attention that a student was unsafe, to me, as we say in the Navy, that's an all-stop. Everything stops until we get that investigated and resolved.
Also, to follow up, the strategic plan charts the course of the school system. And it also states that it ensures that every student meets and exceeds standards as the achievement gaps are eliminated. But you receive a report at one of the board meetings that indicates that there is disparate treatment between African-American students and other students in the area of expulsions and suspensions. What action would you take as a board member?
So about four years ago, one of the statewide efforts that I volunteered for was So about four years ago, one of the statewide efforts that I volunteered for was the Maryland State Revision of its policy on expulsions and suspensions. And we spent two full days reviewing the Code of Maryland and offering suggestions as to how to improve it. And we looked at the data, and the data was pretty clear that by far, the number of expulsions and suspensions were heavily weighted toward people of color. And as part of this working group, we made recommendations that instead, if there is improper behavior, of course, the improper behavior needs to be addressed. But the working group's recommendation was, instead of suspensions for improper behavior, that there would be some type of an in-school disciplinary process so children didn't fall any further behind. So my solution, I think, would be that, you know, we've looked at this before, I'm very aware of some of the disparities there, and we want to make sure that the discipline is fair, but any discipline that's meted out is done in a way where children can continue to succeed in their studies.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Thank you for your service as well, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thanks.
I know this is a little bit of a tough interview sometimes, but you seem like you're okay.
I've got five kids.
Yeah.
This is nothing.
I'm the, one of the county executives' appointees, and my question has already been asked, so I kind of want to circle back to the achievement gap when we were discussing earlier. You talked about teacher inequality and inequity in some of the schools with higher levels of poverty. What would you do to correct that?
I'm a big supporter of market-based incentives to encourage people to go to the places where they're most needed, and that would be looking at the schools of poor student performance and in a group collectively with all the stakeholders, trying to figure out what the right mix of incentives is to bring our high-quality teachers to those places. Those incentives might be non-monetary, they might be extra planning time, they might be getting a leg up on the next assignment, or they might be monetary. They might be bonuses, they might be extra time off. But I think that we can put together a collection of incentives to change teacher behavior, to encourage them and reward them for service in schools that are, frankly, they're more difficult to teach in, and they offer more challenges, more rewards, I think, but higher challenges. So it's that use of market-based incentives, I think, that I would be most interested in exploring.
Okay. And do you feel that if a well-educated teacher and a well-prepared teacher moves into another school, we would be swapping them out with a less-prepared teacher? Or how would you make up for that particular gap?
Oh, I would never mandate that a teacher be forced to change from one school to another. It would be some type of encouragement, either monetary or non-monetary, to encourage service in one of our high-needs schools.
Okay. And with the newly-elected board in Anaronda County, I wanted to see what you thought was an elected board or an appointed board more effective, in your opinion?
Well, for 32 years, I served in service of democracy. I'm a favor of democracy. I'm a favor of giving maximum decision-making to the people. And I think that Anaronda County, being one of the last school boards in the state to transition to an elected school board, I think it's, I think it's time to give the power to the people.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
My name's Anthony Libratori, and I'm the president of CROSC for the county. I want to thank you for your service, and I also want to thank you for advocating for IB at Old Mill North. I went there, and now I'm in IB at Old Mill High School, so thank you.
Congratulations.
But that's actually where my question is. So you talk about achievement gaps for our students for many different reasons. Do you feel as though these programs of choice that have been implemented throughout the county and programs of advanced studies, do you think they've had any kind of effect on these achievement gaps, and if so, how?
I'm a big favor, I'm a big fan and in favor of supporting and expanding our programs of choice. I do think it leads to greater student success because it allows parents and students to specialize in the curriculum that best matches their own passions, their own talents, and their own interests. Of our five kids, all of our five kids have been very different. Our oldest son is a mechanic. He has been thrilled with automobiles since he was two years old. And so he came to us his freshman year and said, "I want to go to Cat South and go study auto mechanics." We said, "You know what? There are very few people who have been blessed with knowing at a very early age what they want to do." And so he said, "Yes." And he thrived there. He thrived there. I don't know whether he would have thrived at a traditional upbringing. Likewise, our second son excelled in the IB program at Annapolis High. So I think anytime you give a parent and you give a student an opportunity to pick a curriculum that best matches their own individual circumstances, that everybody succeeds.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. And congratulations.
I'm not done yet.
[laughing].
Good evening. My name is Samantha Carter, and I'm representing the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Your goal of ensuring equal access to quality education for all county students is one that I agree with, and I know several other families' children with disabilities would agree. So often, parents and self-advocates are striving to make changes to ensure a high-quality education is provided to children with disabilities. So AACPS is working to elevate all students and eliminate all gaps. How would you envision us narrowing the achievement gap for struggling students, speaking specifically for students with disabilities?
So our county has, as best I recall, about 10% of its population, maybe a little bit less than 10% of its population, that somehow has taken advantage of special education services. And those special education services run a wide gamut, from physical disabilities to blindness, to deafness, to autism. I'm generally in favor of least restrictive environments, or LREs. I think that nomenclature comes from the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act. And I think anytime we can put a student into a classroom that is less restrictive than a special program, that that benefits that individual student, but it also benefits the rest of the population as well. If you go today to the Southern High School website, you're going to see a Down student there on their front page. And, you know, I was thrilled when I saw that because it tells me that in that least restrictive environment, they value, they value that student and recognize that she, in this case, had a lot to offer the school. So I think maximizing the least restrictive environment portion of the IDEA Act would be the way that I would go about it.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming. I'm Susannah Kipke. I'm the other appointee of the county executive. My question is about time, always. I see that, starting in 2019, you're going to be commuting to Yale. Is that right?
Yeah, that's right. I got a wonderful opportunity to take a leave of absence from Johns Hopkins Applied Physics Lab and teach for two semesters up at Yale University in Connecticut. I'm still waiting on a final class schedule. The winter semester will be a one-day seminar per week, probably on a Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon. So I would go up probably on Sunday night on the train, work, do what I can up there, and then probably come back on Tuesday evening.
Okay. So my question was just, do you have the time to commit to this with that kind of travel schedule coming up in your future?
I do.
Okay. All right. Well, that was my question. So thank you very, very much. I'm the last to go, so thank you for coming out, and have a good evening.
Well, thanks for your public service, too. I know your all's time is limited, and, you know, it takes a village. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Does anybody want a break before we go on to our next two? Let's take a little break. What time is it? It is 7:58. Let's...
It's 8:07, we're gonna start again. You are Mr. Hussein.
Yes ma'am.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'll just quickly tell you how the interview process will go. Well, you'll have, of course, three minutes to do your opening statement. When you have thirty seconds remaining, you'll see the yellow light when your time is up. You'll see a red light and you'll hear a tone. And we'll ask you to conclude at that time. Going from my right to my left, each commissioner will have three minutes to ask you questions, have those questions answered. And again, when you
Sure.
hear the tone and see the red light, we'll ask you both to wrap it up. If you do feel like there's something that you didn't get to finish the answer, or there's something that was left unsaid, please do submit any additional comments you have to us in the same way that you submitted your application. And we'll all receive those and it'll be posted as a supplement on the website.
Thank you.
Alright, you can start whenever you're ready, thank you.
Alright, well, my name is Mohammed, as you all know. I am, I was, you know, I've been living here in this county for over sixteen years. Went to Annapolis High School, graduated from there, and went to AACC after that, then UMBC. I like to keep myself busy and involved. So throughout my high school, I like to, you know, keep myself busy with extracurricular activities, and such as I was involved with NJRTC, which was amazing program. Also, then when I went to AACC, I was extremely involved there. I was a part of the student government, I was a vice president there of the student government. I also was a founder for a few of the organization there. One of them is the ISA, the Islamic Society of Annapolis. Not Islam, I, sorry. The Islamic Club there. So then currently, I'm working in a, I'm working as a software engineer at a, supporting a government agency, Securities and Exchange Commission. My involvement is, you know, strictly supporting the government agency with any of the applications, website, or, you know, helping them with the different types of work, such as working with the disability people. Whenever, there is a, you know, hundreds of people that use the government facility, government applications, and we just make sure that it's user-friendly for people who's blind, such as, or have arthritis, or these kind of problem. So this is me, and one of the thing that I really wanna get involved in this board is I, I, like I said, I've been living here for sixteen years, and I feel like I have a personal attachment with this county. And my, I grew up here, and my siblings, who is also attending school here, also as well as having a diverse family, and I'm very involved with my community as well. I go, I'm involved with the ISA, which is Islamic Society of Annapolis. Currently, I'm an executive council member in our community, and supporting as a secretary there. I feel like I can bring lot of, lot of, you know, ideas, and from outside of the, of this community, this county.
Good afternoon. There it goes. Good afternoon, Mr. Hussein, thank you for coming today. My name is Natalie, I represent Casada, Maryland, on this commission. Casada, Maryland is a nonprofit organization in the region that represents immigrants' rights and the immigrant community. I noticed in your application that you spoke a lot about possible racial issues in the county, as well as one of your solutions was to provide cultural training to teachers and staff at the school. I'd like to know if you can elaborate a little more on that.
Sure. So, like you said, one of my, the major point that I was focused on was racism and bullying. It's, I take it very important because I was one of the victim. So, there's a few things, I can give you an example of why I said what I said on that. When I was in, I was being, I was getting bullied and racially attacked for, you know, my religion and having my name as Mohammed. Well, my teacher were aware of it, and the, my teacher's response was, you know, "Don't tell them your name is Mohammed, tell them your name is something else." So at that point, I was, of course, very scared, I would say, "Okay, I'm gonna tell everyone my name is Mo." So, which lead me to change my identity, so my whole high school life, everyone knew me as Mo, instead of Mohammed. Which I don't blame the teachers, I feel like they were not properly trained and educated when it comes to these kind of issues. So, I feel like if we focus on that, you know, how to train our faculties, train our teachers, when it comes to these kind of, you know, racial issues or bullying, because they're always the first responder. And if then they know how to tackle it, if they know, if they don't know what to do, they know, and if they can, you know, guide them, okay, maybe I can send them to this person. So these kind of training or education, I feel like is very important for our teachers.
Thank you for sharing your experience, I'm very sorry that you had to go through that.
Thank you.
I do have a follow-up question
Sure.
that goes along with that. Many times when there are these kind of racial tensions within students, sometimes the student that is being attacked will lash out. Do you believe we need that same kind of cultural training with our student resource officers, so that they know how to handle those kind of situations? As well as our guidance counselors, so that they can help guide students with educational decisions?
Yes, definitely. We, of course, training our teachers, which is gonna help to train their students. So, you know, if we can train a teacher how to train our students when these situation happen, what are you gonna do, how are you gonna react? For example, also, you know, we can train their family as well. So, for example, what happened with my situation, when that happened, my, the principle was like I will suspend those students, and but my family, my dad was involved, he said, "No, you can't suspend them, you know, you can't get mad, you know, just calm down, because they're kids, they don't know what they're doing." So I feel like having a broad mentality and teaching, or educating our teachers, what to do with those kids will help a lot in this situation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. My name is Vanessa Rivera, and I'm with Anarondale County Council PTAs. I'm really sorry about your experience, and thank you so much for sharing that with us today. So, your question in your, your application talks about making school environments safe, and you talk about stopping racial issues. Having had that experience, how can the board and schools address the learning needs of students from other cultures and languages? I know you, you kinda started with that, but what can we do, how can we address that?
Could you repeat the last part, I'm sorry?
Sure. How could the boards and school address the learning needs of students from other cultures and languages?
Okay. Being an example of or part of it, personally, what I went through was, of course, there was a lot of gap between students from a diverse community, or different, people who speak different language. I didn't speak English for two years of my high school. And, and there was no one else to help me, or guide me to translate what's going on. So this kind of issue, I feel like we should, of course, you know, have a proper process for, you know, when we're having, accepting kids from different country, different environment, have process that have someone to guide them or help them, or such as translator, and from this kind of environment, which will help the student, of cour, to figure out, you know, what is exactly going on, or who to complain. I didn't have anyone to complain, because I didn't know how to explain, how to, I couldn't explain how to complain. So I had to just take it all in. Having someone in the middle, I feel like will, will help to solve these issues.
If I have more time, this is a question for you. In your family, were you the translator between the school and your family? Or were they, did they speak English?
At, at beginning, of course, I didn't speak English either at the beginning, so I couldn't help them, but they do speak English, all of them. But at one point, that I was the translator at my high school, and, you know, and the other places, because when I figured out, and there was more people from my country join, and then I was the middleman and translator for those people, which I understood what they went through, because I was, I went through the same thing, so I was able to help them.
So do you feel that there's a need for that service, or a resource for those families, so that the child is not left with that responsibility?
Yes, definitely.
And what would you recommend, what kind of service or resource can we provide, aside from bilingual facilitators?
So, I, service such as, you know, of course, when these, you know, situation happen, people don't like to open up, or something like that. So I feel like just not being, being able to translate, that's not enough, just being able to communicate with the family, with, with the children, and what is exactly going on, and, you know, what are the problem they're facing? And these kind of stuff, which will help them to open up, and express their feeling, what is exactly going on. Thank you.
Good evening, sir, my name is Chris Barber, I represent the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
My question for you is, I see one of your goals is to help increase the graduation rate in the city of Annapolis, do you have any specific ideas on that?
Well, what would the idea that I have, graduation rate, the focus on students, right? So, help them, give me a second. So, work with them to like, you know, to, to figure out what exactly they need to do. So such as, such as, are, when they graduate, so first of all, work with them to figure out how, what exactly they need to graduate. So, when I was, when I was going to school, and I had, you know, I worked with the counselor, of course, but end of the day, I still couldn't figure out what exactly I need to take, like I should focus on, you know, what, sorry, I'm kinda like going all over the place. Excuse me. There is a lot of, lot of issues, I feel like with the students, that, that, you know, right, compared to other county right now, that what they're focusing on with graduation rate, with our graduation rate is not as high. We need to focus on what we're lacking, what is the gap between those county and our county? And which will, I feel like, help us to figure out what we need to work on, so we can focus on those issues to graduate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Lisa Shore, I represent the Anarondale County Council of PTAs, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
In your application, you referenced an issue with lead testing in Anarondale County Public Schools, in our, in the water and the, and the piping. I was curious if you had any specific ideas for solutions, and/or ideas for outreach the school system can do?
Sure. With that testing, the lead in waters, the health of our, of our county is very important, especially for a school county, you know, we're responsible for thousands of kids, thousands of faculty. So, which to me is a very important issues, and I feel like, in order to tackle that, first thing first, since we found there is some positive in lead in water, what I feel like we need to test, we need to test all this, you know, work with the students and faculty to make sure that there's, you know, to test them and make sure that there's no lead in the system, in their system. If there is, then we need to do, we need to figure out what we can do to work with that. And secondly, we need to focus on, work with the school district to find out the pipeline, what exactly going on, to test all the pipeline, to make sure that they don't find any lead in the pipeline. If they do, so of course, we need to work with, either we need to replace it, or we need to figure out what exactly we need to do to fix those. Thank you.
Mr. Hussein, I'm Jerry Klaasmaier, from Anarondale Community College. In your application, you make reference to your personal attachment with the county as motivating you to wanna make it better.
Right.
And you say you have several ideas that would be beneficial for the school system, including diminishing racism, proper training for teachers and faculty, healthy food and clean water. Would you elaborate on what some of your ideas might be?
Sure.
To accomplish those things?
Sure. Like I said earlier about the racism and bullying, we did proper training for the, our faculties and teachers. And health, such as clean water, a little while ago I mentioned, and safety, which is very important at this point, I feel like, since, you know, we have had few, you know, some incident that happened, we lost, you know, many lives in school system. So, I wanna focus on the safety of our kids. So few of the idea I have is to, to make sure that, you know, school is safe, is to, we need to make sure that, within our building, we have, we figure out the exit door, exit system we have, make sure we have, you know, enough exit door, just in case if something happened, there's other way to get out. And if we need to, at the entrance, we need to insert metal detector, we, we need to do that to make sure that nothing in an, you know, inappropriate going in and out to school. Also, we need to focus on the, the security system, such as, you know, make sure that all the cameras are working, and make sure that all the exit doors are being monitored, to, to just ensure the safety of our, of our kids. And also, I also touched upon the educating our kids for, for future, educating our kids properly for our future, such as when they graduate of high school, most of the time the kids are lost. Lost such as, such as, they, they don't know what exactly step they need to take. Lot of people, lot of students do, but not all of them. Such as FAFSA, for example, lot of students don't even know how to fill out FAFSA. So we need to focus on, you know, train them and work with them to make sure they have their, you know, they know what exactly they need to fill out. And also, we need to guide them, what, what, figure out what, you know, the major they have. Lot of kids don't even know what they wanna focus on, or what they wanna go to school for. And if they don't have any major, we need to guide them that, okay, guide them to go to, you know, our community college, because there's a lot of a major there, and work with them to figure out what exactly they need to do next. I have seen many time that the kids, the student who goes to college, and they go to community college and take two years of the credit, and when there's time to go to four-year school, most of the time, two-third of the credit don't even get transferred, because they have no idea why, why it's not getting transferred. So we need to guide them to make sure that, you know, what step they need to take. They need to talk, you know, talk to the four-year school council to make sure that, you know, what are the credits being transferred, so they can take appropriate classes for, for their future.
Thank you for the plug for the community college, I appreciate that.
No problem.
First of all, I wanna thank you for applying for the position.
Thank you.
And stepping up. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara, and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders, and that's the administration.
Sure.
What do you see as your role as a board member?
Okay. As my role as a board member, I wanna focus on the improving the student, improving student achievement, first. And make sure that, you know, our, all the community are involved, such as involving their parents, because a lot of time, our parents are not involved, they don't know what's going on with the kids, and, and so on. And also make sure that, you know, do, take appropriate action to make sure our county is, it's, you know, a role model for the other county.
What do you do to build a climate of consensus on the board? What would you do?
To build a climate?
Build a climate of consensus
Okay.
On the board.
So, first of all, I'm a, you know, I'm a team player, I like to work in a team. So of course, I would like to have a good relationship with everyone, and make sure I understand, you know, what are the view, and, and to understand what exactly going on, you know, the point is before, before I, you know, come up with anything. So I feel like having a good relationship, and just being able to work as a team will help.
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
Like how much time do I need, is that the question?
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
Well, I will take, you know, it's, for me, I will say no one is hundred percent, so I will work my best and take as much time I need, you know, to work on, to make sure that it's, I'm doing an effective job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Hussein.
Good evening.
And thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
The Anarondale County Public School System has developed a 2018-2023 strategic plan. That strategic plan charts the course of the school system. And the goal of the strategic plan is to ensure that every student meets or exceeds standards as the achievement gaps are eliminated. But you receive a report as a board member that there is disparate treatment between African-American students and other students in the area of expulsion and suspensions. What action would you take as a board member?
Okay. In my time of school, I have experienced this situation. At that point, there was a huge conflict between, you know, different race at that point. So I would not blame kids for everything, because, you know, watching from the media, what they see, and they think that's right, and they, you know, that's what they believe. So I, instead of fo-, uh, I would focus on how to work with them. Uh, instead of, uh, spelling or, or, or suspension, um, of course, suspension and community services needed, just so they understand, you know, that they did something wrong. So I would figure out and work on to see what exactly I can do, and what is the problem with the kids, so I can focus on that, so I can tackle that problem and, and, uh, take appropriate action on that.
The strategic plan also states it is committed to providing all Anarondle County Public School students and staff with access to safe, equitable, and engaging environments to learn and work. If parents come to a board meeting, and those parents state that their children feel that they do not feel safe at their school as a result of several incidents occurring at their school, what action would you take as a board member?
Okay. First of all, I will, would like to, will try to meet with the family and the parents, uh, the children, to figure out what exactly going on with the children, um, so why they're not feeling safe in the school. When I figure that out, and I will tr-, I will have, make sure that, you know, we will work with the kids, to make sure, uh, to figure out how to approach this, such as either, uh, if the problem is, is someone, kids are bullying them, and we can, and figure out what exactly going on, and so we can work with that. If, if it's a bullying issue, you know, we can talk to the kids and give them a warning. And, and if, if, if it's a racial issue, we can do the same thing, you know, we can talk to them, and figure out what exactly going on with the, with, with the kids, and what is exactly the problem is.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for coming out. And I, again, I want to thank you for your testimony as well. I know that this is a difficult interview, and, you know, you have a lot to share, and, um, the bullying issue is, is definitely a problem. Uh, my name is Corinne Frank, I'm one of the appointees with the county executive. My questions have also been asked, so I wanted to ask you particularly, how does some of your experiences in the school, um, you have a little bit of a different background, how would that affect you as a board member?
I feel like having different back, uh, background, um, it will open door for me to understand different point of view, um, that I would know exactly what, you know, what the issue is to, uh, if it is a culture issue, and I would know what exactly going on, why the, the, you know, the, the kids having problem, because I went through the same thing. And if it's a language issue, I would understand exactly the same thing, because I have the same problem. And to have that background will help me to open, you know, my door to understand many other issues.
Absolutely, okay. And then, um, we've recently, um, gone from an appointed school board to an elected school board in AACPS. Would you say that, um, an appointed school or an elected, um, school board is more effective?
I will say an elective.
And why?
Will be more effect, and because it's
What is your thought on that?
Giving chance for other people to, you know, uh, understand the, the nominee, or, and then they have a chance to, you know, select their, their person.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, um, thank you for interviewing. My name is Anthony Libretory, and I am the president of the Chesapeake Regional Association of Student Councilors, or CRASK, here at the board, it's somewhat of a student union for the county. Um, we're also involved with, uh, the process for interviewing and selecting the student member of the board every year, as well as superintendent's team advisory. When you were a student, were you aware of any of these student advocacy programs here?
Uh, like I mentioned earlier, having that, uh, the gap, the, the, the problem I had, uh, with the, the language barrier, or, or the issue that I had, so I, I was aware of it, but I wasn't that involved, because I, you know, didn't know what step to take to get involved.
Okay, do you, um, have any suggestions as to how we can increase involvement, um, among students, that even if they don't know how to get involved, in order to reach them?
Sure, sure. I feel like, um, advertisement, of course, will work, um, uh, such as, you know, like I said, you know, people with, you know, um, who has a problem, the, 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 um, the language problem or other issues, they won't understand. So if, if advertisements such as, you know, all the, if all the teachers are aware of it, they're making an announcement in the class, that, you know, there is this meeting going on today, you should get involved, um, and so on. And if this happened repeatedly, then, you know, I feel like more kids will be aware of this, you know, the meeting or involvement, and that's, I feel like that's how we can get more involvement there.
Okay, thank you, we would, we would have loved to have you when you were a student here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Samantha Carter, and I'm with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee.
Okay.
So your direction in wanting to make school environments a safe, educational, and fun place for all students would resonate with the disability community. Too often, children with disabilities face instances of bullying. In some cases, students with disabilities lack an understanding of both verbal and nonverbal, social and behavioral clues from their peers, such as not understanding when another student is trying to communicate frustrations. When it isn't readily apparent that these students have disabilities, rifts between the child with the disability and their classmate can widen, and difficulties when meaningful inclusion can be compounded. How can we help educate same-age peers and inform schools so that instances such as these are reduced?
Okay. Like I said, my work environment is also, uh, even though I, I, I'm a software engineer, however, we focus on disa-, people in disability in government. This issues is, it's throughout the country, and, you know, we have seen many issues, many situation. We need to focus on educating our kids to, and, and, and teach them how to handle, and when you have a classmate who have problem understanding. And we need to educate all the kids, which is not even going to help them in this classroom, which will gonna, that will help them in their future as well. And, and that's mean, one of the priority, I feel like, focus on the students, so they understand, you know, if, if you have a student sitting next to you, if he's having a hard time taking note, take note for them, so on. And this kind of, this kind of situ-, you know, um, the, the, the help will come from, uh, you know, our teacher, of course, you know, educating their teachers, so they can educate our kids, so they can help, they can work with the disability people.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susannah Kipke, I'm the other appointee of the county executive. I'm so sorry to hear about, about your experience having been bullied, but I'm curious to know, when you were a student, what did you wish that the adults around you would do to help you? And could you make that happen as a board member for other kids?
So of course, I wish someone came out and helped me. So, uh, that didn't happen. So I feel like, um, educating our teachers, and, you know, that's, I, I press on that, you know, a lot, because that's very important. You know, the, the parents are not there when their kid's getting bullied, you know, they're, most likely their friends are not there. When they're getting bullied, they're by themselves. So sometime in the classroom, or, or here and there. So if we properly train our teachers to take action, and, and we can probably tell, you know, if they can take action, and, and they, they have an appropriate answer for it, okay, you know, pass it to someone else. I feel like if the students who, they know that, you know, who's bullying, they know that there's people watching them, I think will reduce a lot, because they, they think they can get away, because, you know, no one is watching them. So we need to press on, you know, educating our, uh, faculty and, and teachers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, my last question is, uh, the time commitment. Being on the board is a pretty significant time commitment. There's a lot of meetings, and then there's additional stuff outside of the scheduled meetings. Do you have the time to, to commit to this? It's daytime meetings and evening meetings?
Yes, I feel like I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, I'm the last question, so thank you so much for coming on.
Thank you very much.
Doing this. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for coming. I'm Susannah Kipke, I'm the chair of this committee. You will have, as you know, three minutes for your opening statement. When you have thirty seconds remaining, you'll see a yellow light in front of you. When your time is up, you'll see a red light, and you'll hear a tone, and we ask you to con-, conclude your, finish your sentence, but conclude. After that, each commissioner going from my right to my left will have three minutes to ask you questions and have questions answered. Again, you'll see the yellow light when you have thirty seconds left, and a red light when you, when your time is up. If you feel like you get to the end, you weren't able to answer a question thoroughly, or you think of something else, you can, um, submit additional testimony to us at the same place that you submitted your application, and we'll all receive it, it'll go online with, as a supplement to your application. All right?
Great.
Start whenever you're ready.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, and for you all taking the time to interview me. Uh, my name is Erin Snell, I'm a parent of three here in Anarondle County, two who are old enough to be in the school system. I'm originally from Texas, but our family has been here now for three and a half years, and we plan on staying here for a long time. My husband is a, a uniformed officer in the public health service, and originally grew up in Mexico, so our kids are not fully bilingual, I wish they were, but we've been working on it. And I wanted to just share a little bit about myself, too. If I were to be selected for this position, um, I would bring with me a deep commitment to public education and to meeting the needs of all children. I am a product of the public school system, have been a teacher, worked in and around schools in many different settings, and I deeply believe that every child can achieve great things, and that, um, if we can remove barriers to stu-, for student achievement, then, then that can be possible for them. I've also seen what works and what doesn't work in different settings, and so I feel that I would be able to bring ideas, concrete ideas to the system here. Additionally, I consider myself to be a thorough and thoughtful decision maker, and, um, that's part of who I am as a person, but also as a, I have a PhD in education policy and leadership studies, and was trained in how to gather data and analyze data, and use that to inform decision-making. I also know that, um, that here, we need to be constantly tracking how all of our students are doing, and breaking that down, so we can hold ourselves accountable. And then lastly, in terms of community involvement and collaboration, I deeply, again, believe in the importance of all of us communicating together and working together. And I feel like when we create a welcoming environment, where we actually get to know each other and trust each other, then we can work together. And I've brought that to my work as a PTA president at my children's school, and also in my other community involvement activities and work environment. So I'm excited to be here tonight and answer your questions.
Thank you for coming today, um, and interviewing. My name is Natalie, I am appointed, uh, to the commission by Casa de Maryland, and they are a big nonprofit organization that deals with the immigrant community and immigrants' rights. I wanted to touch base on one of your goals that you hope to accomplish, which was to expand parent and community involvement with the board, particularly those who are traditionally underrepresented, is what you stated. The situation that I want to bring about is that many times, different immigrant communities don't feel like they can participate in their students', uh, school activities, whether that be due to language barrier, or whether that be due to fear. Particularly now, there's a lot of immigrant parents that are fearful of going to the schools or going to the meeting places. I would like to know if you can elaborate on what your solutions would be to this, or how we could outreach to these, uh, communities?
For sure. Um, I think that we need to be very sensitive in how we approach different communities, but also go out to communities. And again, it's about building trust and relationships, and so I think a community, if they, if a family see that you are genuinely interested in caring about their needs, that helps them feel safer with you. I also think that when a school reflects you, and you see your language represented at the school, and when there are resources, that's your child, if he or she doesn't want to have to translate for you, but there's translators there, that that helps you. I know my husband didn't grow up in the United States, and so for him, it was a foreign process here, but the program that exists for the international parents, that training really helped him understand what is a PTA. I mean, he learned how decisions were made, and so through that, it enabled him to be a little more empowered, um, to understand, and all the acronyms, there's so many acronyms. So, um, being new to the United States, people cannot understand that. So I think going out and doing outreach with people, connecting with the organizations that have built trust with those families, and, um, and then having the schools reflect those parents.
And just, I have a few minutes, a quick follow-up question, uh, more so from the student's side, um, in regards to outreach. In certain pockets of the county, we have big immigrant populations, and fortunately enough, we have staff that can adequately help the students make decisions regarding their future education. In the school that I went to, unfortunately, the guidance counselors did not know what to do with students who were not US citizens, or who were not permanent residents. What is a solution that you would have for that?
For, to make sure I understand correctly, to making sure, uh, schools are properly set up to help guide a student?
Yes, coming from all kinds of backgrounds.
Yes. I think it involves training for those staff members, so understanding their biases that they might have, understanding, getting trained in barriers that might exist for that child, and getting specific training for different types of children that there might be. So I think it goes down to that training. And then following up, having somebody who supervises those teachers, giving them feedback and helping them grow as they're learning how to do that better.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Good evening, thank you for coming out. My name is Vanessa Rivera, and I'm with Anarondle County Council of PTAs. Um, in your application, you talked about, um, uh, continuous improvement as a reason for wanting to serve on the board. How can the board know if its goals are being accomplished and its policies carried out? Specifically, how would you measure it yourself?
I would want to see data frequently and regularly. So I think our eye needs to be on the prize, and so in terms of our goals around student achievement, student fe-, feelings of safety, student feelings of connectedness, and however we're measuring that, I would love to see at every board meeting, um, or at least to have that in my own hands at every board meeting, how we're doing with the achievement gap for every single breakdown, um, of students, and how we're doing by school, to whatever extent we can ga-, gather that data regularly. Um, and so I think that's one main way I would do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Ann.
Good evening.
Uh, my name's Chris Barre, I represent the Central Maryland Chamber of Commerce. Uh, in your application, you speak about, um, you'd like to increase transparency to further facilitate holding the Board of Education and the superintendent accountable for results. Can you speak more to that?
Sure. I just think that we cannot, our superintendent and our Board of Education have a very difficult job. They have eighty-two, over eighty-two thousand students to educate, and that is hard. And the more we can feel that it's okay to be vulnerable, and show where we're having a hard time, the more that opens us up to people to come and help us, and the community to help us. And so what I mean by that is, I would love to see more reporting out at Board of Ed meetings, circling back to concerns that have been brought up. So if a parent brings up a concern, then the next Board of Ed meeting, the, either the Board of Education or the superintendent would address those concerns that had come up. And so, um, that would be one idea.
Thank you.
I'm Lisa Shore, representing Anarondle County Council of PTAs. In your application, you mentioned your experience with CAC and advocating for social emotional wellness. What did you do? And are there any additional things that you would like to do and/or see happen?
For sure. Um, I was involved, um, on the C, I've been, I'm still a part of the CAC, uh, which has been a great experience for me to get to learn about the Annapolis Cluster and all of the other clusters, and reach out to the different, um, schools and PTAs and constituents in those areas. And one of the committees I was on was, uh, social emotional health. And I know that the committee, um, came up with some really concrete ideas in terms of our school system's doing great things, in terms of things, in terms of educating our students. And it would just be neat to have more of that communicated to parents so that I would know this month, my kids are doing this and so I could reinforce it at home. And so that was one of the ideas that came out of that group that I think would be awesome. Basically highlighting what's already happening, but enabling families to be more integrated into that.
Snell, I'm Jerry Klaschmeyer with the Anarondle County Community College. In your application, you refer to insufficient funding for our schools has significant impacts on the system. I can tell you fifty-two years ago, when I began my career, it was in the county budget office and you know what the big problem was then? Insufficient funding for schools. Do you have any specific insights that you'd like to share with us concerning how you think the funding question should be addressed?
Sure. I mean, I think two fronts. One, just as any responsible board looking internally and seeing if there's places we need to be shifting to better use our resources. And then secondly, our community, we have fewer students attending public schools than other communities might and so just helping communicate to our larger community how public schools are central to every aspect of what our community does. So if we want to have a safe community, if we want to have thriving businesses, we need to have a really robust and continue to invest in that robust educational system that we have. And so in terms of funding, I think it's about educating more the general public. I think it's about creatively problem solving and so maybe it's not about more a property tax, but if there's some way we could do an income tax or some other ways of finding funding. And those are my main ideas for now.
Good luck.
I know, right?
Welcome. Thank you for your application. I'm Dr. Linda Ferrara and I represent the Association of Educational Leaders and that's the administration, principals, et cetera. What do you see as your role as a board member?
Well, I appreciated the guidebook here and explaining the roles of a board member. I think one important role of a board member is helping carry the vision for the school system and then holding, again, tracking the data and holding our sights on what we're trying to achieve in terms of goals and progress towards those goals. I think it's about staying in your lane and the job of the board is to establish policies and its quasi judicial role and it, but it's not to get involved in the everyday running. That's the superintendent's job and his staff's job and so, but it is partnering with the superintendent effectively and having good communications. A good board member, I also think the whole point of having a board in part is to have community involvement with the schools. And so the board should be representing the community and reflecting the community's wishes and, and values to the school system as well. So I see that as part of it too.
What do you do to build a climate of consensus on the board?
To build a climate of consensus, I again, think it starts with relationships and people knowing each other and knowing what motivates them and what their interests are. And from that, once you understand a person, you start to trust each other. And so once you have that trust and know that that person is genuinely motivated for good reasons, you're more willing to work with that person. And I also think to build consensus, you have to be willing to negotiate and to try to figure out different solutions and not be too stubborn. So I think if you're going to build consensus, you have to be open-minded and you have to have it always break about, about the kids because it's easy to get lost in all of these other things, but everything, every decision we, we make needs to be about what is best for all of our children and I think that helps ground people when you have a common goal.
What do you think is the time you need to be an effective board member?
I think it's going to vary based on the time of year. I would imagine some weeks it might be more five or so hours preparing for a meeting and I imagine some weeks it might be twenty hours of attending events and preparing for the budget processes. And so I imagine sort of an ebb and a flow. I'm someone, I think there's going to be a learning curve and so an initial investment and just trying to understand and talk with different school personnel to get educated.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jacquette Jacqueline Alsop and I represent the Anarondle County branch of the NAACP. The Anarondle County Public School has developed a strategic plan for 2018 through 2023 and that strategic plan charts the course of the school system. The goal of the strategic plan is to ensure that every student meets or exceeds standards as the achievement gaps are eliminated. But you, as a board member, you receive a report to the board of despair treatment between African-American students and other students in the areas of expulsion and suspensions. What action would you take as a board member?
I would, I think that the expulsions and suspensions result from teachers' implicit bias often. I know when I was a new teacher, I had not, I grew up, even though my schools were diverse, I feel like we were fairly segregated within the school by race. And when I became a new teacher, I really had to reflect on my interpretations of different students and my understanding and watching myself to make sure that I wasn't being, treating some students differently than others. And we don't mean to and nobody intends to, but we do have those biases. And so for me and part of my training, we would reflect on what and ways we've treated students and really analyze what is going on. So I think a lot of it has to do with teacher training and ongoing development. I also think it has to do with how our schools are set up. I would love to have, I feel like if a kid isn't feeling represented at the school and if they see, if they don't see themselves reflected in the staff at the school, that might make them feel like that school doesn't belong to them or that they don't belong to that school. And so I think if you're not feeling safe and recognized somewhere, you're more likely to act out because it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel safety and you don't feel respected. And so I think it's about training and I think it's about having representation in our teaching and leadership staff at schools too.
Another statement in that strategic plan is, and it states, "It is committed to providing all Anarondle County Public School students and staff with access to safe, equitable, and engaging environments to learn and work." If parents come to the board and they state that their children do not feel safe in the schools that they are attending and they don't feel safe as a result of several incidents occurring at that school, what would you do as a board member?
As a board member, I would want to speak with those parents as well as make sure this is an implementation of the school system. So it's, it relates to our superintendent and his staff and how things are being handled. And so I would want to work together with the leadership of the, on the school side, the execution side, to understand when it happened. And ultimately, a child deserves to feel safe at school. So whatever needs to happen to make that child feel safe at school, I feel like we need to do that. So I don't, depending on the complexities of what happened, I don't know if it could be fixed by doing interventions with those children together and having them problem solve together or if it's past that phase where it's really like there is an aggressor who that child does not feel safe around. If, I would like to explore, I don't know how the policies would work with this, but if that child needs, somebody needs to be shifted to a different part of the school or to another school, trying to problem solve. But again, it would be through support and connection with the superintendent and his team and then helping just make sure that the follow-through happened.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, my name is Corinne Frank. I'm one of the appointees of the county executive. I want to thank you for coming out and thank you for all of your involvement with the PTA. This is not the first time I've seen you in this room, so I appreciate all your advocacy. One of my questions I wanted to actually ask is not on your resume. I've seen you here testifying for your, your elementary school and I wanted to know, if you were a board member, especially with the lead issue, what would you do differently? Or how could you help to affect some change?
If I were a board member?
If you were a board member?
How would I handle lead differently? I think when parents first, in terms of oversight, I think with something like lead, where it involves sort of life or death health of students, I think board extra close communication with the superintendent, I don't know if they did this or not, but having extra close communication with the superintendent just to see what's happening because I'm sure the board receives, I know I've shared a lot of communications with the board or a couple just with concerns. And so I think having that ongoing communication and regular check-ins about how the lead testing is going and also engagement with the process, just to check to make sure as a board member, I agree with the process because something as critical as this, it doesn't hurt to have a lot of brains wrapped around it and it doesn't hurt to pull in outsiders in terms of universities or people that do, who are experienced in lead testing. I also think as a board member, I could help reach out to other school systems who've done this before us to help bring in resources and ideas to make the process even more efficient. And that in terms of, it is the job of a board member, I think too, to make sure we are just following things the best way we can. And so wanting to just have oversight over that too.
Okay, thank you. I also wanted to ask, one of the parts of your resume, in Georgia, it looks like you helped to implement Common Core and you helped with the transition of Common Core. Would you say that Common Core was successful?
In, in many ways, I was involved with the literacy side of Common Core. And in Georgia, our standards before Common Core were very low level and so in terms of reading, there wasn't a lot of critical thinking and analysis involved. And so for Georgia in particular, the move to Common Core in regards to reading involved a lot more rigor, which in, I was teaching middle school and involved in the middle school curriculum. And so I saw a major improvement in our, in our education of students there because our teachers, instead of just answering multiple, multiple choice questions, our students had to be able to select evidence from texts and write about it and have conversations based on evidence from what they had read. And so I would say that it really improved the outcomes for the students in the schools where we were working. I know I've, another challenge, especially with pushing down a lot more to kindergarten and some of that piece of it, but I would have to say for a middle school setting, I really saw some major growth for kids.
And with Anarondle County Public Schools, we've recently seen a shift to an elected board. Do you think that an appointed board or an elected board is more effective?
I think an elected board has many promising features in terms of community engagement and community getting to select people and awareness, more education for them. I also think that it'll hopefully make board members feel more committed to getting the community input.
Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Anthony Libretorio and I'm the president of Crask here at the Board of Ed. Very impressive application, I enjoyed reading through it and reading everything you had to write. You mentioned in your application about your emphasis on relationships. What do you feel is though the relationship should be between students and their school communities and the Board of Education and its board members?
Thank you for the question. I think that student voice is really important and I also think that student involvement with our democratic processes is really important. And so to the extent, I would love to see field trips of students to board meetings and to have the board go to schools and really interact. I also think focus groups with kids more often. I know a lot of times the best ideas come from kids because they're the ones that are in the school system. And so I think just more of a, and I don't know, I think the board members probably already do a lot of that, but just more direct connections and involvement and having kids around more often would be great.
Okay, thank you. I forgot in my intro to thank you for testifying, but I have seen you here before like Mrs. Frank said, so thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samantha Carter and I'm with the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. So I want to talk with you about transportation. So some students who receive special education services have experienced extensive commute times in order to access their education. For example, some students who receive services outside of their home school will often spend their time commuting to school for hours at a time. How can we work to reduce or eliminate the hardship for these students?
I've been pondering this because I've heard a lot of parents who have concerns about transportation and I feel like I need to dive in more to understand what's going on. I also keep thinking in my graduate school time, we had to do capstone courses where we were given a real community problem and we had to analyze and research and study. And so it makes me wonder if, if before the school system or the Board of Education has reached out to the universities here to see what support we could get in terms of researching that. And again, just hoping that there could be some creative solutions. I don't know what those would be right now, but I think by bringing in more brains to help us get to the root of the problem and find solutions would be helpful. Also, just looking at the school districts where that's not an issue, I'm wondering what they're doing to make it easier for kids too.
Absolutely. And would you ever support expanding the continuum of placement options closer into Anarondle County so that students with disabilities could be educated closer to home?
I don't know much about that, but it sure sounds like that would make sense to have more options close by for kids and not having to waste time. I know it's exhausting, the school day is very long and especially if you have a disability where you might be having to focus harder to be able to take in that information, getting some more downtime would be beneficial, so.
And if time permits, can you further expand on your goal of wanting to make progress towards closing the achievement gap and specifically in reference to students with disabilities?
Sure. I, again, I talk to a lot of parents and so I've heard some parents who are pleased and some parents who just feel like their kids' needs haven't been getting met. I think part of it, I've also heard education, special education teachers who just feel maxed out. And so again, it comes down to the budget and also trying to find more funding. I also, I just blanked on the question, but what was your question, more time?
It's just making progress towards closing the achievement gap.
I think, again, if we're watching and things happen and people understand that it's prioritized when it's closely monitored and it may be that AACPS, I imagine they're doing that, but as a board member, I would really want to see how are our special education students doing in an ongoing manner so that people pay attention and when people pay attention, you know it's a priority.
Absolutely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Susannah Kipke, I'm the other appointee of the county executive. My question is also about your comment about the achievement gap. Obviously, that's a goal we all share. I'm curious to know, because you do know what works and what doesn't, you've seen it in different school districts, do you have just one or two tangible things that you would want to implement or see happen, just steps toward closing the achievement gap?
Sure. One of the things, I've worked in traditional public schools and I've also worked in public charter schools and one of the charter school systems that I worked in, I have never seen such amazing professional development for teachers. And so I, as a literacy director, I got to observe my, and as the reading coach, I got to observe all of my teachers once a week, gave them feedback on their lesson plans, gave them in-class feedback and it wasn't evaluative. The purpose wasn't for me to evaluate them, it was to help them grow. And so seeing the gains that a teacher could make, and I also experienced that as a teacher. I had a reading coach who was there just to help me become a better reading teacher and writing teacher. And so I think for me, we know, research has shown the most effective thing to invest in is high-quality teachers. And when teachers get ongoing, consistent professional development that's aimed right at what they need, it's not just a blanket for everybody, but it is someone sitting in there who's trained to watch and see and notice your biases or notice where you could tweak what you're saying so kids understand better. I really honestly think that that is where it's at, is in teacher effectiveness, which comes through us continuing to learn and grow.
Thank you very much. I'm the last question, so. Thank you very, very much for coming out. Have a good night. All right, we are moving into public testimony. Public participation. We have, well, we'll wait. Occupied for a minute? All right. We have, oh, we have more, okay. All right, I'll call them in the order that they're in my hand. A reminder that public testimony is also limited to three minutes. You'll see, I'm sorry? Only three. You'll see the, the same yellow light when you have thirty seconds and you'll see the same, or less, Commissioner Klaschmeyer. I'm sorry, now it goes by the order, it's in my hand, but you're first, you're on top.
Does this work here? Ah, good. Good evening, everybody. Salaam alaikum, peace be upon you. Thank you very much for serving us, you, serving me and everybody in my community. Thank you. And I, I know maybe it's not allowed to give here to applaud, but I would like to applaud for you. This is a good job and this is the difficulty we have. we have as older people to see volunteers. So it's very hard to find young volunteers. So I want to thank you. And I am puzzled because you have a tough job. I have seen three people here did wonderful job for you. And it's very hard to pick between them. But I, I know they have education, they experience, but I have to be a little biased to my young man. And the reason why, where we come from all, even though he's from different countries, but as Muslims, our holy book, the first word revealed to our Prophet peace be upon him was, read. Aqra. Aqra, read. And that's why many of you probably hear about the Chesapeake Superior School. And do you know why they have always 4,000 students in backup, in the lottery? The reason why? Because they have 10 school teachers, 10 Muslim teachers, where they dedicate their time Saturday till 5, 6 o'clock, and they don't ask overtime, because it is forbidden to ask for overtime, overtime to teach your student. So this is what we have, we come up with mentality. This is what Muhammad will bring, this mentality. If he needs, when you ask about time dedicated here, believe me, he will give time more than what anybody ever will give time. Because this is what we do. I am older man, and I have worked with the Board of Education. I went to the international parent training here. Have no children here in school. My youngest son is 32 here. And the rest of my grandchildren, 24 in Jordan and Iraq and Saudi Arabia, but my children are spread all over. But the need for, to see my community educated, and you see, you see the youth here. You can look at them in their eyes, because I have Board of Education to come to teach them about bullying, about how to fill paperwork to go to university, about how to go to their community college. Dr. Lindsay is a great woman. She came to our community to meet the student several times. The Board of Education here, several times, come to meet my community and talk to the community. Every year they're invited, so as you are invited too. So this is what we bring here. We bring a young man who can understand the young people. I could have come here and applied here, but I don't want this. I will not do any good like the young people. They can communicate with young people better than me, better than anyone in 30, 40 years old. He's a cybersecurity expert. He can talk to them, he can talk to the technology with them. He can talk about drugs better than them. They can communicate with him. And this is what we need. We need young people to communicate. I work in the Rotary Club, the Elephant Club, and we have a problem recruiting young people to talk to the young people. And here, I give you a young man that he's willing to put all the hours here, with all the education, with all the help. Plus, one more thing too. You don't think we can let him serve here and leave him alone? We're not. We will be his advisors. We will be his parents, we will be his teachers. And if he do anything, we brought his mother and his wife here, so they can beat him up too. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Good evening. My name is Amaya Chaudry, and I'm a graduate student at the George Washington University, currently studying public health. I have had the pleasure of knowing Muhammad for several years now in a personal way. He's been a dear friend to me and to all of the friends that we share. We are all drawn to him for his lighthearted nature and his easygoing manner, often referring to him as the kind one in our circle of friends. I feel particularly lucky, though, to also see him do work outside of our circle. I've gotten a chance to watch Muhammad work hard in academia, pursue his career with an unquenchable thirst, and care deeply about philanthropic causes. I've also seen him serve our religious community with a devotion and a dedication that is absolutely unparalleled. He's always the first person in any room to volunteer for anything at all, to lend a hand or an ear, to reason with the unreasonable, and to be the problem solver and do things only if he knows he can do them right. He has siblings in the Anorong County school system that he's incredibly involved with, making him a stakeholder here. His personal experiences with diversity and inclusion, commitment to health and safety would serve as invaluable assets to your board. Having grown up in public schools in this county myself, namely Crafton Woods Elementary and South River High School, I can't imagine a better fit candidate or hard-working person to serve the children and our community than Muhammad himself. Thank you so much for your time.
All right, next we have, forgive me if I mess this pronunciation up, Ousmane Chaudry?
I'm not sure. I don't think he did homework, so he either broke his leg. It's okay, it's okay. Thank you. Sorry. Good evening. Mine won't be, you don't have to worry about the lights. I can't stand that long. But thank you so much for having us here. I'd really like to just say two kind of quick things about Muhammad. You know, growing up as a minority here, we didn't, a lot of us, you know, didn't really have the resources, sometimes in school, but also back home through our parents, to do as well as we could, both socially as well as academically. So I've been really, really lucky to know Muhammad just from the aspect that, I think, as a community, we've been able to rely on him, just going through some of the things that he went through. He's always been someone who's been open and committed to just being a kind of a safe space and learning about us and guiding us. So I think, you know, as a board member, one of your responsibilities is to just kind of be there for the community as the needs in, kind of, as the needs evolve of the community, and he's shown that in our community. And then the second thing is, is he's constantly trying to just learn, whether it's at work, he's, I've known him as he's kind of evolved in his professional life, as well as in our community, growing up as just a member and now as part of the Executive Council. So just to kind of have that like thirst for knowledge and learn, I think as the community and the county continues to evolve, just having someone committed to that would be really beneficial. Thank you so much.
And last, we have, help me, Mamadou Theon? Theon?
You did good.
Okay, thank you.
We have a few more cards.
Okay.
Well, I'll be very brief, since we have some more testimonies. My name is Mamadou, so it's like mama, like your mama, and do like Mountain Dew. Last name is Choun. And I've known Muhammad for a long time now. It's been probably like 15 years. So I consider him a brother, you know, somebody who's really dear to me and my whole family and the whole community. As you see, all of us here, we came today to support him. And what I can tell you about Muhammad is he's very, very kind soul, very heart, such a heart of gold and a passion for helping others. So with that said, as a board member, I know that he would be very, very engaged, very motivated to do just that, help others and help the community and help the school system. So I don't want, again, I don't want to, I don't want to be too long, but I really, really think he would be an asset to the board. We're also proud of him at the community, and I'm sure you guys would be if you gave him a chance to show you what he has. So thank you so much for your time. Thank you for having us, and thank you for everything you guys do. I know it's not easy. I was sitting here listening saying, man, good thing I'm not a board member.
Thank you very much. Next we have Zaria Chaudry.
How are you guys doing this evening? First of all, I'd like to apologize for walking in late, but I knew Muhammad was here today, so I quickly went to the gym, did a quick workout, showered, and ran over here. So I'll keep this short as possible. I would like to say, first of all, I've known Muhammad for a few years as well. I know all his friends. We all grew up in the same community in Crafton. And one of the things I noticed about Muhammad was he's always older than me, so whenever it came for me to ask him a question, maybe it was in my career or something I wanted to do in school, or people I hung out with, he was always really excited to teach me and learn from me, even though I was younger from him. One other thing I always noticed about him was he's always wanted to give more than taking. So when it came to us as friends getting together, he would always provide, if we were doing a barbecue, he'd be the first one to give everyone food before he ate. And I thought that was a really good deed, and that showed his character and his initiative and, you know, as a person willing to give more than take. So I think as a board member, Muhammad would be a great fit, but also an asset to this community and this county. Thank you very much.
Yeah. All right, next, we have Venice Alexander.
Good evening. My name is Venice Alexander. I'm not the best of speakers, but I do feel that it is my duty to speak on Brother Muhammad's behalf. I will say, and he may get this, get on me a little later, I think that you all have only seen the tip of the iceberg for Brother Muhammad, because I think his nerves may have gotten a little bit shaky, which mine are right now as well. I am a mother of five. I have children in high school. I'm a mother of a child with special needs. I'm a mother of black children. And all of these things, I think, are areas of concern as a mother. I have teenagers. I have kids who are great kids, but they may not continue down a great path. And I feel like the education system needs to be set up in such a way that is supporting our youth to become the best that they can possibly be. I think that while saying all of that, the people who are put in the position of Board of Education, I think definitely should hold a close space in their heart for the needs of the people who are in the community from all different walks of life. I think Brother Muhammad is exactly that person. He is very connected to the community, not just the Muslim community, but also just the community at large. He's very open and malleable in developing relationships with people of all walks of life, and very passionate and committed to those things that he has asserted himself in. We are fellow board members at the masjid that we serve, and I think that just seeing him in action there, he has very strong leadership skills, very passionate, very connected, very committed, and those skills brought to the Board of Education, I think, would be awesome. I know he's a very reliable person. He's able to listen and make decisions without bias for the best of those who are being affected. So I'm just here to provide my support as best as possible. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you very much. All right, and next we have Muhammad Khalid.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ooh, that's kind of, yeah, sorry, taken back a little bit. Let me just start off by saying, it's good to be here. This is where all the action happens. I mean, like, I too am a product of Anorong County Public Schools, Glenburnie High School, if anyone here, know what? Yeah, so, but I mean, I'm here to speak on, to me, he's more of a role model. I have the pleasure of working with the youth in my religious community, and recently, a few years ago, Mo has, I shouldn't say Mo, he's very upset about that. Muhammad, he told me to call him Mo, but Muhammad has joined a board there. And it's good to have someone, he's older than me, to look up to and be in a position of leadership. He works really well. He's very hardworking. I don't want to talk about the other board members, but to me, he does the best job, and he puts in the time, especially with his busy schedule. I'm really surprised he does that and everything. But more, I was listening here, when I was sitting here and listening to the testimony and everything, it's more important, it got me realizing that to have someone, like to have diversity is our strength, and to have someone of maybe my skin tone on the Board of Education is really important in people, in students that are in Anorong County Public Schools, looking up to that and looking up to the position and having someone represent them, and have that person be a young, hard-working, intelligent individual is very important. And I think, yeah, I'm like going all over the place, but I think Muhammad will be a great fit to the Board of Education here.
Thank you very much. All right, is there any other public testimony tonight? All right, well, thank you all very much for coming. This is a big show of support. We're done. That was our last. Was there any other business, actually? We will reconvene. We did not select a secretary. I think are we going to postpone that until we're all here on the, yeah? And November 17th is the date. Is that right, Molly?
Oh, not 19th, it's the 19th, 19th. It is the 19th. Mm-hmm, okay. November 19th, 7 o'clock. Be there or be square. We need to adjourn this. We are going to do our voting. That's right. Yeah, same time, same place, November 19th. Yeah, here. You're welcome to sit in on the voting. It is, it's open to the public, yep. Let's adjourn. All in favor? Opposed?
Thank you for your, thank you for your share.
I chose to come to Cat North because this offers a more in-depth field. This is more hands-on, get more work done. It looks better with colleges. It looks better on a resume. You get more opportunities.
We get the same credits for being here